Good evening, this is Tuesday, July 26th, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Meeting of the, oh, not the Community Preservation Act Committee, the Berlin Planning Board is a preliminary matter. Please note, I'm not going to do this as well as you, Tom. This meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating via video conference accordingly, please be aware that folks may be able to see you, anything you decide to screen share on your computer or anything you broadcast will be captured and recorded. This is Tom Sanford, Chairman of the Community of the Berlin Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present. Go ahead, Tom.
Tom Sanford.
Carolyn.
Carolyn, here.
And Jay.
Here.
And Tim. So we have a quorum. With a quorum of the board present, Tom called the meeting to order at seven forty-five. Open meeting of the planning board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's order of March 12th, 2020 due to the current state of emergency. Specific information and guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found in the town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement for open meeting law to have all meetings held at a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. We're using the Zoom platform, please be clearly so accurate minutes can be recorded each vote and the meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Thank you very much. Seven forty-five, we're right on schedule.
Someone.
Alright, can we approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting, which I believe was June 28th.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve the meetings, any more discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tim Wheeler.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Thank you, motion passes unanimously. I believe we have an A and R, but before we get to that, can we just, we have two applications for signs up at Highland Commons. And I looked at both of them, they meet the dimensional standards and everything else that we do, so if we could, somebody could make a motion that, and the sign, I'll tell you who the applicants are. One was for Oh no, I can't find it. Tell you in two seconds. Almost for Jersey Mikes.
Oh, right.
Which is going right next to Muya. And the other one, yeah, and the other one is for achieve physical therapy, which is going next to the Emerson on the other side.
Great.
Yep. And both of them, yep, go ahead.
I'll move them.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the proposal, signed proposal as fitting our bylaw, signed by law for Highland Commons for those two applicants. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tim Wheeler.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Thank you all, I will send a note to the building inspector that these pass the muster. Perfect. The next order of business we have is, there was an A and R for Highland. And I had sent around an email the last time before we met, that we didn't meet for the scan of it, and I think Jay actually posted it again or emailed it again with the form A. Yeah, this is probably one up on Highland. And I don't know if any proponents on the, on the line with us for this.
Well, I know their attorneys here, yep.
Okay. So because we didn't have any reference to this before, I don't know, somebody, maybe somebody can explain what they're asking us to do.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Alex. My name is Alex Param, an attorney, represent homes at Highland Ridge. So the backdrop, as I'm sure you're aware, is homes at Highland Ridge was approved special permit some time ago with parcels B and D to be put under a permanent conservation restriction. But to continue to be owned by the homeowners association, the condominium association. With the, you know, conservation commission, we had drafted and went through a number of iterations on the conservation restriction. Submitted that to the Commonwealth last October. And there it's been languishing ever since with one blip of response asking for some more information, but it has not been approved. So one of the alternatives to give the conservation commission a security to ensure that the land is, you know, ultimately permanently restricted was to convey the open space parcels to the Sudbury Valley trustees. And that's something that the conservation commission is favorable to. There's one small kind of oddity in all of this, and that is that the DEP requires that the condominium association retain control and ownership over the wellhead protection zone, which is the area, the circles inside of what's now marked as parcel B2. So the purpose of the A and R plan is to cut out, and you see this, this parcel B2 you know, tracks the, the wellhead protection zone as closely as you know, reasonably possible, is to cut that parcel B2 out so that it would be retained by the condominium association and thus satisfy DEP's requirements. And allow us to convey parcel B1 and parcel D to the Sudbury Valley trustees. Just to give you a sense of where things are, Sudbury Valley trustees have done their sort of basic due diligence, they've had you know, they've done a phase one environmental update, and now they're proceeding along, so we expect to be able to complete at least the conveyance to the Sudbury Valley trustees. You know, in the next month or two. In the meantime, the conservation restriction is still in front of the Commonwealth, my understanding is that they have you know, the, the conservation restrictions that are dependent upon state funding. You know, took priority, they were supposed to have been done before the end of the fiscal year, that's been extended to August 15. So I don't, I don't know. I doubt very much that we would hear from them before then, and I would really kind of expect that maybe another couple of months afterwards. So, but ultimately, you know, Sudbury Valley, if, if we convey to the Sudbury Valley trustees before the conservation restriction is approved, then Sudbury Valley trustees undertake him to, you know, put the conservation restriction on after it's approved, so that's, that's the overview from the perspective of, you know, the A and R plan, obviously. We're not trying to create any buildable parcels. This is all simply to satisfy the requirement of DEP that the condominium association retain control of the zone one around the wellheads.
And the conservation commission is happy with this?
Yeah. Hi, Alex. Alex and I have spent a lot of time together this spring. The conservation commission is very happy about Sudbury Valley trustees taking ownership of the property. All along, we were trying to figure out how to make sure that the site was monitored. All the properties that we co-hold with SVT, they go out and monitor once a year for encroachment, or you know, if someone's dumping trash or whatever, so we're trying to figure out how to have them monitor the property, even though we owned it. And this smoothes out that process tremendously.
Good.
And indefinitely, you know, they were going to pay for it and pay SVT. And that's all great, but, and it was going to be through the homeowners association, but I we, I think we kind of all envision 10, 15 years down the road, the homeowners association potentially not wanting to do that anymore, and it just, so this smoothes that out tremendously.
Good.
The only piece that we still have to work out, Tom, if you see, there's trails on both pieces of those properties.
Yes.
And it the piece of the, the connecting piece on the trail that's on the wellhead property. Alex, correct me if I'm misstating this, but DEP didn't want the trail to cross on the wellhead piece of property. So we're trying to figure out how to reroute that and still re, and still connect those.
Yeah, so to be precise, DEP would not allow a trail that courses could go on across the wellhead zone, so there was an initial rerouting and those trails are shown on the plan and the trail easements have been actually granted to the town already. The additional piece would be to do a connecting trail on the western side of the of the, of the wellhead protection area. And Carolyn, do you know, have they gone out and marked that yet?
As of the la, the last meeting that we had last week, they still hadn't been able to get everybody coordinated. So I'm not sure if tonight we can you know, approve this pending the resolution of that connecting trail piece.
The A and R plan component doesn't actually have to show that since the easement would not be over the over the parcel B2. But I'm, you know, whatever, I it's not critical that it be done tonight. Like I said, I don't think the conveyance is going to actually occur for another month anyway. If you want to have the easement done first, that's okay too.
That might make it cleaner.
Yeah, I agree. The other thing too is, I don't know whether, I know it's a wellhead protection, but at some point in the future, if the town ever got town water and it serviced this parcel of land, can that ever be considered a building lot? And if so, maybe we should have the nomenclature on there not to be considered a building lot for B2. I mean, it would have to have frontage and it'd have to be a road accepted and all of that, but
Well, it could be, right, or it could be an extension of the
Existing parcel, yeah, development.
Because the town water would open the 66 unit restriction.
Right.
Well, I mean, it's capped in the overlay, right, at the number of units?
Yeah, so I have
Still, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I have no problem with the addition of the note. I think one of the things that Sudbury Valley trustees wanted, and we don't have any objection to is that in the original draft of the conservation restriction, there was a reservation of the right to, you know, put in additional public water supplies, wells. If for some reason these failed or had to be abandoned. And what Sudbury Valley trustees wanted was undertaking to then, if that happened, to then give them the parcel B2. And, you know, under conservation, but I would be willing to expand that to, you know, if those wells had to be abandoned or were abandoned in favor of a public water supply to add that to the conservation land as well, so. So we can, we can, you know, do that, and, but we'll have the notation put on the plan anyway.
Yeah, I'm fine if they had the, I mean, I understand we have representation from the conservation and we should be more sensitive to them, however, as planning board member, the only thing I'm worried about is, is the creation of of parcels of land and whether they're buildable or not buildable in the future.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like the need to sign tonight isn't there, so making these modifications and getting all the ducks in a row makes a lot of sense, that'd be great.
Yep, perfect.
Looks good.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Night, Alex.
Alright, I think we're right on schedule for a continuation of our hearing.
Good.
Excellent. I saw the email from Jason, so it's Michael Rochette and Michael Harding are the representatives that we're expecting.
Okay.
That was a question. Michaels, if you would raise your hand if you want to be promoted to speak. Alright, we got one.
Is this the continuation of the public hearing? Yes.
Alright, Mr. Harding, there you go.
Got you. Good evening, everybody.
Hi, how are you?
Well, thank you very much for asking.
Good, good. So before we continue, I wasn't, you know, a participant in the last meeting when we started this, but I did review the videotape and read the notes and the transcripts, so I feel that that makes me eligible to participate and going forward, so if anybody has an objection, I'm willing to entertain it, but if not, then I feel that I'm okay to continue.
No problem from me.
So, Tom, I'm, I guess through the chair, as I've heard other people say. Jay and I don't know who else went to do the sound testing. Was it, and how did, how did that go?
It was very interesting, so we, I stood in the backyard of the, one of the people that had written us a note. And Jay drove his truck all over the edge of the property and I could not hear it. I could not hear the truck, nor could I hear the backup alarm. There was an ambient noise from the highway from 290. Now, we did it, it was probably what, 5:30 Jay, that we did it?
Yeah.
So it was probably during commuter traffic hours. But I could not hear his alarm, the only way I heard it was when he telephoned me and I could hear it through the phone. So, again, the, you know, there's so many variables, the wind was actually blowing, I believe, up the river, so I don't, that would be from east to west. Or east to west, I would think. At that point.
Is that true?
I would think the east, west, north, northeast or so, so the wind was blowing in that direction, so it wasn't, wasn't completely blocking the sound, it was sort of a crossways, so, but again, I did not hear any, and Jay's backup alarm is not the environmentally duck friendly sound, it was a more like a bus backup, you know, the beep beep, definitely, you know, beep.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. We hear, we do hear lots of different sounds, sometimes car alarms. It is very dependent upon the direction of the wind, I grant you that. Also, I would presume that the the application is for using a loader, you know, a big bucketed. I, 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 I think I'm right in hearing that you, you had some other type of truck there, so it wasn't the same apples for apples sort of sound that's going to be produced.
Well, our understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, was that there was going to be truck traffic as well as the, the loader loading and unloading, but the trucks would be delivering materials. And I mean, you're right, we didn't have an 18 wheeler or, we had a, I think it's a six, 10 wheeler or whatever Jay has for a piece of equipment, but, you know, the, and, and again, you're right, the backup alarms could be different or whatever. But the bottom line was, is that we didn't hear, it wasn't pervasive, it wasn't at a level that would be
Yeah. I also, clearly, at this time of year, the trees were in leaf, which makes a huge difference.
Yes.
Clearly, well, I don't know proportionally, something like a, at least a third of the year, the trees are without leaves. I'd ask you to consider that. Some evenings, some days, in fact, we can hear the 290 as if it's right next to us.
Correct.
Other days, I can't hear it. Which is therefore obviously dependent very much upon the direction of the wind. I appreciate your, your, your coming and conducting the sort of audio survey, if you like. However, I don't, I don't feel that it's particularly representative or scientific, I mean, I can call you on other occasions to come and hear just the normal sound of, of the, the school buses moving around in there. And with great respect to you, I, you know, and I, this is, I'm not joking, I I'm sure your hearing is absolutely adequate, but
I wouldn't be so sure about that.
It would be ridiculous to suggest that that sound cannot be heard.
And no, I'm, in that particular day, in that particular time, with that particular truck, I was, I'm reporting that I did not hear it.
Fair enough, I, I just wish that if, if they are granted permission to put this facility in, every day is like that, and I'd rather, and clearly, not going to be.
Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent. So, but if, this is, you know, this is the findings for that piece of it. There are other things that have been shared with us that I would like other people to expand upon, we did get a letter from Marlboro. And we did get, did we get a written letter, Jay, from Hudson, or did we get an email from them?
I think we got an email. We got the letter from Marlboro, six or seven different ways, but I don't think we got anything written from Hudson.
Okay, nothing written, so we've had some information from, ahead, Carolyn, you had your
Two things, we have an audience, audience member with a hand up, but so I just opened the email that came from Jason saying who their representatives were going to be tonight. And none of them are here. So the proponent isn't actually, I don't know if they're having trouble getting in. But I'm not sure how you want to handle that, but Karen has her hand up in the audience.
I would like, I wish they, they were here because then they'd be able to respond.
Correct.
Can we email them with the My Town Government link?
Did anybody send them a link? Or is they, I mean, they should be going to My Town Government to get the link to come up? So not sure how you want to proceed.
Well let's, I mean, we're here and everybody's participating, I know that they, maybe they have difficulties getting in, so let's, let's let's hear, hear from Karen and we'll, we'll, we'll go a little bit more, and if they don't show up, then, then we might, I might want to continue this again. They, at least they can, you know, catch up, we can update them, but I don't want to go too, too much without
I, I just got, I just got an email from Jason looking for the link. So they must have also been working with the other one.
Right, right, so direct him to My Town Government.
Well, I can just copy it soon.
Whatever you wish.
Right.
So Karen is available, Karen, what would you like to say?
I do want to hear what the other letters are that came in from the various towns, but I also want to point out that, you know, regardless of what you did not hear that night, it is not necessarily, as Michael points out, representative of what goes on all day long, it's a snapshot in time.
Agreed.
And also, you know, I remind you that when Jason talked about the number of trucks and the amount, how often they're coming in and out is going to be quite concerning, so there are a few other pieces other than just a snapshot in time where you listen.
Agreed.
So
But, but there also is going to be noise buffers up that haven't been installed yet, so the variables are going to continue to change.
With, with all due respect, I was supposed to have a noise buffer from Solomon Pond Mall, New England Development that never got put up. And, you know, the noise just continues to grow. You know, in talking to our attorney, her question was, how did the buses get in there and how did the steak burger place get in there? Because according to the drawings, you're, you're in a butter and you never got a notice for any of those things either. So there, there's some ongoing questions here that are starting to flag up in our mind about you know, how these things are playing outside of a overlay retail zone and a butter's aren't notified, and, and I think Tim brought the point up last time, you know, it already seems that we, we've created a precedent here that is starting to creep again with the steak burgers in the front of the Sears parking lot and the buses and things, and I've canvassed my neighbors, nobody else has gotten any kind of a butter's notice, so we do think there's a larger issue here that has to be resolved.
Okay.
May I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The buses was were they granted permission to store school buses there on the scale they are at the moment? Solomon Pond Mall, Simon, whoever they are, because I seem to remember from the zoning meeting that it, it appeared that they hadn't been granted. And they were just placing the buses there without permission, so that's something I would like to to flag up and request that if they haven't been, then that needs to be looked at.
So they, the town was officially unaware that they were there, the assessors weren't aware that they were there. The contract, we understand, is up for renewal later in the year, and there's going to be some serious conversation about what will transpire going forward between the building inspector and the planning board, and so we'll, we'll be trying to um, we'll, we'll be trying to capture, um, what's going to happen before.
Yes, the, I mean, this gets rather messier and messier because clearly their style is that they um, s- spread their, um, how can I put it? They're a little bit greedy perhaps in, in how they, uh, um, enlarge upon maximizing their, their ability there. And um, we have suffered the noises of the buses as well. Um. I, you know, we don't watch, my wife and I travel extensively, so we don't watch every bit of uh, town correspondence perhaps when we should, but we, we have realized that we've never received a butter's notice about permissions for having the buses there.
Right. And there was never any given.
Yeah, well, that, that I'm sorry, I, I have to, I, I don't know what penalties can be, uh, gained, but clearly that's to me not acceptable.
So that's outside of the parameter of what we're dealing with tonight, but it would, we're noting what your comment is, you know, we
Okay, well, I'll.
We're, we're dealing, we're, we're attempting to deal with it. Um.
Uh, so Tom, um, one of the proponents that was listed in the email is here.
Can you promote him, please?
I can.
Thank you.
Uh, and Michael, I'm going to try to put you back in the audience. Hopefully I don't bump you out. If I do, please plug back in.
No problem.
Uh, and Karen, I'm going to put you back in the audience for now as well.
I think I'm still.
All right. Paul.
Good evening.
Hi, Paul, how are you?
Excellent, excellent. Yeah, I, uh, and, and so I apologize. I'm not the, the lead on this. Um, it's, uh, Bond is actually covering and there should be somebody from Jordan. Um, I know I had technical difficulties getting on, so um, hopefully somebody from Bond will be on.
Uh, there is somebody on the phone, but I have no way of knowing who that is.
And they can't indicate by raising their hand, can they?
There is a way, but I don't know.
Is it star nine or something like that?
Oh, it appears it might be star nine. Uh, person on the phone, if you could identify.
Jordan from Bond.
Okay.
Hi, Jordan, how are you?
I'm well, yourself?
Good, thank you. So did you get a copy of the, uh, letter from Marlboro?
I did not.
Did not. Okay, um. Jay, do you have the, can you read the letter or read parts of it?
Um, yeah.
If you don't mind. And then there was, we, there was a, a question asked about how much of the parcel or the truck route will be affected by, or, you know, Marlboro will be affected by. And our, my understanding, it's a short little part of the, uh, Donald Lynch Boulevard. The parcel that the, um, proposed storage area is not located in Marlboro at all, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. So just traversing their public ways.
Correct.
Okay, there's two letters from Marlboro. There's the building commissioner and the mayor. I think you're looking for the building commissioner ones, right? No, maybe not.
The building commissioner one was shared. I didn't see the one from the mayor.
Hmm.
Uh, it was emailed around.
Let me share my screen and you can, uh, see it. You read that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Make it bigger, is that good?
That's good. In scroll, yeah.
Hmm. And then the bottom part's just a threat.
Yeah.
Cut off your mutual aid. But didn't we decide there was only a very short?
Well, it's the, the way, it's away from the mall to the Hudson Town Line, which would be Donald Lynch Boulevard. That would be the, the, um, the public way in Marlboro that would be traversed.
Right. So somewhere around the skating rink-ish, it goes from.
Beyond the skating rink, yeah, it turns into Hudson. I think it's at right underneath the, um, the overpass to, to the 495.
Right.
It's in that neighborhood anyways.
Yep. So, and then up to.
The entrance into the mall.
Right.
So the first comment is what we've been struggling with and we were, got clarification from town council. And then the second comment will be what the, our board is trying to struggle with. Whether this is a use that's allowed under the, um, underlying zoning and whether we can make the determination whether we can allow this use under what's permitted.
And then Jay, what was the next page?
Uh, it was just a threat.
Oh, I see.
Which if, if you want to comment, I'll make a comment. I don't take lightly to threats and I don't appreciate the fact that when we made comments, when they were permitting the target about lighting, we were totally ignored. So if they want to start getting on their high horse, they better be careful.
Yeah, I, I think.
They want us to listen to them. However, they won't listen to us. I got a problem with that. So.
And it's inappropriate for a quarter of a mile of road that's being impacted to say, we're going to let your houses burn down.
Exactly. So is there, um, there was one from the, a, a building commissioner too, Jay?
Yeah. And I don't see that in the package sent stuff that I sent you. So I gotta go looking for it.
Okay.
Did you see that one, Carolyn?
I did see the one from the building inspector. I did not see this one.
Do you remember what it said?
Uh, it said essentially the same thing that, without the threat, um, you know, it said that, um.
Oh, here it is.
That it's not a use permitted. Yeah. So I don't even a hundred percent understand how I don't know. It, it seems, it sounds like they're trying to regulate the road.
Right. And to, you know, it's a public way. So truck traffic goes up and down that road all the day, all the time. They service the target. They service the mall. They service the hockey rink.
Right.
It asks just one question though, is, is any of the access road on the, on the mall property that leads into Berlin in Marlboro?
I, I would assume it is.
Yeah. I, I mean, isn't that what they're?
So you think that's what they're talking about?
To the proposed uses upon land in Marlboro, which is not zoned by right for a contractor's yard. So he's talking about land other than the public way.
Okay.
That's the access road from the public way to the portion of the mall property that's in Berlin. And he's, I suspect that, you know, my recollection is, and we've, you know, when you look at the plans, that, that access um, into Berlin is only off of Marlboro um, land.
Hmm.
Because the, the property line um, goes well, all of Macy's is in Marlboro, all of Regal is in Berlin, half of CVS is in Berlin and half of it's in Marlboro, because that's where the the jog takes place. Part of Penny's is in Berlin, just a small portion in all of Sears, but, um, the portion of land that they're proposing to use in Berlin, in the parking lot in front of Sears is, is clearly Berlin, but it doesn't take much to end up in Marlboro, because you end up in Marlboro before you get to Donald Lynch. And that's I, I think what the, he's talking about here is the, they have because we share this, this agreement in this zone, um, they'd want to consider that this use and whether it's allowed in, in their town because access is being achieved through Marlboro.
Right. So Tom, uh, Elizabeth Kelly has her hand up.
Okay.
Hi, um, so I'm the general manager at Solomon Pond. I've been on the, but mostly have not been speaking much. Um, but as just previously mentioned, um, the portion of the mall that um, the contractor's yard would primarily, if not entirely, be using to access Donald Lynch is the entrance closest to Target, which is if it's a, a hun- in Marlboro, I'd be surprised. That entire roadway on the perimeter of the property is Berlin until you get pretty much adjacent to Donald Lynch, and then it becomes Marlboro. So it's not a significant portion before you hit Donald Lynch Boulevard.
Okay, thank you.
Mm hmm.
So Carolyn, you don't have any of, you don't have Jordan, Matt, or either Matt in the audience?
No. Well, Jordan is on the phone.
Oh, Jordan's on the phone, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
And remind me, the, the correspondence from Hudson was verbal or email or not at all?
It was the letter.
From Hudson?
Hudson, Hudson.
Yeah, I think it was an email.
It was an email, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't see that one.
No, me neither.
Can I send one email to you guys? Let's see. Let me check.
Do you want to stop sharing your screen while you look for it?
Sure. See, I do.
We don't want to see the dancing dogs playing poker.
I don't want to see anything by accident.
Don't give me a choice.
To stop sharing your screen?
Huh. So stop video, didn't say stop sharing.
So if you move your cursor, a gray, a green box doesn't come up at the top? No, actually it looks like as host, I can stop it.
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay. No, that's Marlboro.
Well, I think the other comment I would like to make too is that, um, the roadway that Marlboro was talking about is only going to be for vehicular, you know, traffic going across it. It's not going to be utilized for any of the storage activities or anything like that. All it is, is an access to the parcel.
Correct.
I'm not finding anything from Hudson.
You're not finding anything? Okay. I don't recall whether I saw it when you showed me some of the letters or whether you emailed it to me. I, I don't recall.
No, there's definitely nothing written.
Access to it. All right. Then maybe it was a verbal that we, that we got. Um. I don't even know if it came through our select board.
Oh, maybe it did. I don't see it in our mailbox.
No, okay.
Do you remember the gist?
I don't. I don't. I think that they were questioning their route that they were going to take through Hudson. Um, and the access from Berlin to Hudson. I think there was concern that they were going to use River Road, which we know they're not going to. Um, that they're going to come down through Park Street or is it Park? I believe it's Park. Um, and then, then through there, but you know, as a matter of trans, you know, traversing public ways in Hudson. I, what happens in Hudson, happens in Hudson. Really, the world ends at the town line, as Cali always used to say.
So how do we make a decision about this?
I can make a motion and we can debate.
So we keep the hearing open while we're debating that motion?
We can if we want.
Which I, I think I'd rather keep it open.
You know, um.
Because once we close the hearing, then the, you know, we can continue the discussion, but you know, we're.
There's no new information.
Exactly.
I, I can make a motion that we approve the plan and I'll make it known that I'll vote against it. But I, I, I make the motion to approve it so that it's clear that a no vote turns it down.
Correct.
Um, so I would make a motion that we approve the plan. as presented. Now, we may come up with some conditions, but we can debate those.
So voted at first and then discussed the condition second?
You seconded it, and then I asked if there's any discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the plan as presented. Is there any further discussion?
So, I'm
I'm sorry, guys.
I, I'm struggling with, with accepting the, the plan because I've talked to the assessors office, and it doesn't appear as though there's any substantial financial benefit to us as a community. There's still an outstanding issue of impact on a butters. I mean, granted, on that particular instance with leaves on and the wind blowing in the right direction, perhaps. There's not impact, but we've got some comment that the school bus activity is noticeable, so I would assume that the negative impact on a butters is still potential. The city of Marlborough, I think, does have a point when they say that access to a contractor's yard across their land on the mall property is of concern to them, and I think we ought to take note of that. I'm not pleased with the last paragraph, but that doesn't change my thoughts about that. And I know Charlie said that the world ends at the town line, but I, I don't want, I mean, I have trouble when, for instance, Hudson grants a sewer permit, hook up to a lot in Berlin without conversation with Berlin. And I don't think that's right. And I, I think that in this case the impact of this project on this location leaving this site on Donna Lynch and heading east is going to have a significant impact on streets in Hudson. And I think we ought to take note of that and try to protect their interest as best we can. So that's sort of in a thumbnail where I stand, I guess.
So let me ask you this. You notified, I believe you notified the planning board in the town of Hudson, correct?
Yep.
Okay, did they make any comment or make any, you know, give you any information, whether they even are interested in this?
I, I heard that I don't, I don't know where that elusive note is gone, but I heard that, that we did get comment from them and it was not favorable, but
Okay.
I, I don't know.
I just got an email from Eloise with an email from Margaret that went to Tom, oh, no, went to all of us, I guess. Dig all the way through it.
And Eloise has her hand up, so I'm going to promote her.
There is a email from Hudson.
So.
Director of Planning and Community Development, Town of Hudson.
Can you? Can you share that one?
Can.
Um, what do you want to just read it?
I can share it. We could do both, there's got to find, okay, there is. It's very fine print, we're going to have to zoom it way up. And show the screen. Is that readable?
Yes. Can someone from Bond comment whether they had a discussion with Hudson?
We, I don't believe we have at this time.
Okay.
Right, so I guess I did see this. It didn't stick out as kind of a response, but I did see this.
Well, it says June 30th, so it was three weeks ago. That's why we can't find it.
Right, so who is this from? It is, it's, I keep trying to scroll and can't.
From Christina Johnson, Director of Planning and Community Development, Hudson.
Right, so it says that she has contract, contacted the contractor to set up a meeting. And as far as we know, that no meeting has been set up.
Yeah, if we, if we could kindly get a copy of that, and we could, we would definitely set that up, no problem.
Uh, let's see, four, five. Forward. Jordan, right, that's important too?
Yes, sir.
Or in fact, I'll, I'll do the two mats in you, know what that?
Thank you, I appreciate.
All right, Jay, I'm gonna stop your screen sharing while you do that.
Yep. Still getting stuff sent to the planning email box for some reason. Okay.
So that's one point that Tim had made, and so I guess we got an answer on the Hudson part of it, and notwithstanding the threat that was sent to us from Marlborough, we have some comments on from them that we should consider.
We can be the, we can be the better neighbor.
Yeah, we can. Yes, and perhaps we should take the high road, but it just galls me that.
I one hundred percent understand and agree.
We've had several conversations with proposals that were on the fringes that they basically thumb their nose at us.
Right.
So. Does anybody else have any further points to add to Tim's?
No, I, I mean, I, I don't really have anything to add other than I agree with Tim's viewpoint about all of it.
Um, I was wondering whether we could put some condition, prove it and put some conditions around it where it had a shorter allowed time, like a year that could be renewable. So we could see whether it works, whether it indeed bothers the butters or not. And we all put up construction nearby for a limited period of time, but a year and a half to two years is a long time. But it does seem like we need to respect our neighbors, so.
Right, I'm not sure that putting a condition of ha- half of the asked for time is helpful for them.
Well, it would demonstrate that they have to be you know, good stewards and do what they say, and if they don't, then they come back before us for the renewal, and we say, no, we're not going to renew it. You didn't live up to your bargain, and we're not interested in going forward. The thing that, that, you know, one thing we should consider is, is that we're asked to do something that's out of the ordinary. That's a big ask, and we're not getting any compensation for it. And not that I'm trying to be greedy or anything else, but if we're being asked to do something that you know, is beyond what we feel is reasonable, and there are aspects of this that are unreasonable. You know, then there should be some sort of compensation for that. You know, we do it all the time when we approve stuff and we're looking for, you know, linkage or whatever. I, I know this is in a permanent building. However, you know, it's, it's, it's a significant change from you know, what has been agreed to by the citizenry. You know, and we're the gatekeepers of that trust, and you know, we, we should take that you know, consideration seriously, and I think we are, and I think that we're doing a fair job of trying to find the balance. But, you know, I'm still not a hundred percent. I mean, I did like the suggestion Jay just made about shortening the duration, and I see that that's possible, possibly a workable solution, but there are several other things that would need to be you know, put into those conditions as well.
The issue of to the town.
Hold, hold on one second. Okay, let me hear from the members first, thank you.
Right, Jordan, hold on.
Jay?
Yeah, the, the issue of benefits to the town. It's not a situation where we're trying to enable somebody to do something as an opportunity. It's, it's more of a desperation thing, right? Because the malls and receivership and the benefit to the town may be keeping the mount, the mall alive since we get a fair amount of tax revenue from it. I mean, it's kind of hard to quantify that, right? But I think that's that's why, that's the positive part that I see about it is.
I agree.
It helps a tough problem gets partially mitigated.
Yep. But it's a, it's a temporary solution.
Yeah.
Right. Tom, did you want to hear from Jordan now?
Yes, Jordan, now you can go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I just want to say from Bond's perspective, we would be amendable to, you know, doing something like a one year. You know, and making sure that we're living up to the qualifications and satisfactions of, you know, maintaining the stop piles, the dust control, things that are making you know, expectations to the town to prove that, you know, we can make this work and it's safe and effective for the community. You kind of just took the words out of my mouth about the the positive aspects, just seeing, you know, the situation the mall is in, we're providing a revenue stream to kind of keep the mall alive in which they're paying taxes from there. That was one of the benefits of it. You know, if there's some other type of revenue stream, I'm, I'm not quite sure what that is. We'd, we'd be interested in hearing what that is, but as far as the timeline, we would, I think we would be okay, you know, doing a year and then revisiting it. I think anything shorter than that's a little bit difficult for us because of the the cost it takes to set these things up and then, you know, to pack up three months later is, is a bit difficult and costly and you know, aside of any, you know, gross negligence or anything like that.
Tom, there's a, an audience member with their hand up.
Okay, can you promote them, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Michael, I can.
Hi, hi. I don't know if you can see me, it's, it's got dark since we first started talking. So if I'm in darkness, I do apologize. Yeah. Let me see, it was Jay who raised the point that we don't have any specifics of the revenues that would be gained. My, my question, I raised my hand prior to Jay speaking, and actually asked, was going to ask, what exactly does Berlin gain by this? If there was sort of a huge amount of tax revenue for being there, yes, I can understand that, and Jay, of course, partially answered that today. I'm guessing that since Solomon Pond is in receive, receivership, then there's, there's been a considerable drop in funds, if any, coming in. Which is significant, but the, the other thing which we raised with the zoning board, which I haven't heard discussed here with the planning, is we had early concerns about runoff of water and how that was going to impact the environment, as it seems to run into the it might run into the storm drains, and, and often those storm drains are blocked. I've been over there and seen them block with leaves. And I'm concerned that the nature of the soil and the runoff of the water might find its way first into the Azabeth, and, and of course, wherever the drain water ends up. And on the other hand, I, I think I'm right in saying that when Bond has described the manpower that's going to be there, it was described as one or two people, so it's not as exactly as if this is going to be a huge local employer to the area, which I don't see a gain. So, and, and also to coming to Tom's point, I, I can understand that, yes, Marlborough Town might not have always been cooperative in the past, but I wouldn't want this to become a a, a situation where we have the right to, or rather you, the board have the right to say, oh, well, you haven't done this in the past. We're going to show them we can do this anyway, and therefore that that cloud everyone's judgment and, and pushing this forward accordingly. I mean, my attitude is, why take the risk on this? And even if it does go ahead, we really need mitigation in terms of guarantees of of, of the time of day that they're allowed to operate. This is not being discussed. I think you can understand that I don't want to be woken up early in the morning by contractors' vehicles moving in and out in the bleats that I, that I fear, and that I sometimes hear anyway from the, the school buses. And clearly, it, it isn't just me at 183 River Road, it's, it's the whole stretch of River Road right up to the, to the new village at the, at the Rotary. There's a lot of risk in this, and I, I appreciate people saying, well, let's give them a trial period, but why have it? Why take the risk? Why have all this? Surely Berlin's a, and, you know, a successful enough and prosperous enough town without having to take risks like this. Thank you.
So we do have some information, Michael, on some of your comments. Carolyn sits on the Conservation Commission, so we are sensitive to the stormwater management runoff, that type of thing, and I'm sure that they're very interested in seeing what their mitigation plan is going to be. I know that they talked about storm socks that are, or catch station socks that are in there that would prohibit any runoff from going farther into the detention ponds. I know that they talked about their hour, hours of operation, which would be Monday through Friday. No earlier than eight o'clock and no later than four? Um, if I remember that correctly.
Either four or five.
It was either four or five, but eight to, eight to four, eight to five. And, you know, Monday through Friday. There was a third point that I, I forgot what you made, and then there was the, 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 the financial aspect of it, and you know, the, the, the notion that we lose the tax revenue stream from something that's you know, a fairly large contributor to Berlin's tax base is something that, you know, we should consider. I mean, that's not our purview, but it is entering into the discussion. So I think it's germane to talk about it. That being said, you know, I'm not a hundred percent convinced that this is the ideal situation for the town of Berlin.
Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
Then, Tom, I would ask you to consider that unless you are certain, this is not a prudent way forward. I, I think that we, as residents of Berlin are within our senses of expecting the level of due diligence so that moves, moves forward of this nature are. The level of due diligence so that moves, moves forward of this nature are of a certain nature. Why take this risk? Why, why put us all under the, to be the jury for the next year or whatever temporary license you grant for them? Why, why make us endure this just so that they can edge their way in and it gets probed? And someone goes, oh, well, we got the dollars we need. I mean, is, is this the price?
Right, right.
Is this, is this how we're going to all proceed? And, um, I know, I understand Simon and Solomon Pond's plight, but. That is their business. This, these are our homes. This is our town of Berlin. And we all live here because we find it a beautiful place and we wanted to remain that way. And for, and for me, this is unnecessary risk and can erode that, 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 uh, style to which we've become accustomed. And that, that's why I feel strongly it should be opposed.
And I appreciate that. Yep. And, and that's why we're having this public process so we can get input from the neighborhood. And we're not in a, a glass box someplace making a decision on a, the four of us on our own.
Again, we got a little bit of info from the assessor's office yesterday. Income, I know we get.
I'm going to put Michael back in the audience.
Good, thank you.
We get excise tax revenue when vehicles are stored in town.
Yep.
And I think these guys are only talking about a loader, so that's not going to be a lot, but the school buses, there's like a hundred school buses over there. Which the assessors didn't know that initially, and I think that's a potential. Stream of revenue. Now, I guess if there's a lease. With Bond, I don't know whether.
Let me, let me, and then maybe this is going afield here. Um, the, the school buses are coming back to renew their permit that they, whether they got it. Fraudulently or whatever, we can set that question aside for a second. Um, so if, if we grant this, does that preclude the buses from being there? Or are they going to move them to some other location? Are they going to coexist on this site?
I thought the location for this proposed activity was different than where the school buses are.
Okay, so the school buses still can be there.
Are you sure? Cause current, currently the school buses are there.
Yeah, Elizabeth has got her hand up.
Elizabeth.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. The school buses would remain. Um, they, uh, will be concentrated a little more than they are now. We've let them spread out a little bit more than necessary, and then Bond would coexist with them.
Okay, thank you.
Elizabeth, before you go.
Yeah.
Are you about to renew a contract with the school buses?
I believe it was already done last year. I think it was signed in November.
And it's for a year or longer?
Uh, I believe it's for a year. But it doesn't, hasn't, the old one has not expired yet, but they've already signed a renewal, as far as I know.
Okay, but we're going to issue a cease and desist probably on your school bus operation because there's no permitted, allowed use. So I know the assessor's office has tried to get in touch with you about the status of that contract.
No one's reached out to me, Tim, but I'm happy to talk to them.
Molly, Molly has tried to reach out and she says she's getting the runaround, but so that's a separate issue. The school bus issue has to be dealt with independent of this, but it is a problem and it needs to be dealt with.
And that's fine. I, if you can give me Molly's contact information, I have had no one reach out to me. And I, I assure you, no one's getting the runaround. I would, you know, wouldn't have any reason to give anyone the runaround.
I'll, I'll have, I'll, I'll give Molly your information and she'll get in touch with you.
Okay, that would be great. Um, and I, you know, while you have me on, uh, speaking, um, on behalf of the mall. You know, you, we're all well aware that the mall is in receivership. You're probably well aware that. The income stream is dwindling, uh, for the shopping center. And we would have a lease with Bond, which would certainly help us try to keep the lights on for a while while we, uh, try to turn the ship. Um, not just the bond deal, but the school buses as well are, are both fairly, uh. Lucrative for the mall, um, and you would get taxed from the rent on those, both of those, um. Leases. Um, and I would hope that we could have a conversation before we terminate both of those. Uh, well, I mean, at least terminate the buses, but before we settle the issue with Bond. Um, you know, the mall's in a very di- difficult and precarious situation. And anything that impacts our income is going to impact our ability to continue to, to manage and, and keep the lights on. Um, if you recall what Simon was doing last year, it was not keeping the lights on. And they were not keeping the place in a, in a very, um. Customer friendly condition, and we've turned a lot of that around and we've spent a lot of money, money doing so. Um, but to continue to chip away at the income, um, is not going to allow us the ability, particularly with the cost of. As you all know, everything going up and including utilities, um, is going to make it very difficult for us to continue to maintain the property. In a, in a safe and, and pleasant condition, um, as the income continues to dwindle.
So. This is one of my other problems, I guess, and it has, it rolls back to town council's opinion. That we have the option to issue temporary permits for uses that aren't. Listed as part of the allowed uses for the overlay. And, and what Elizabeth is talking about here is a, a, a school bus use that's not allowed. That we need to talk about, a contractor's yard that's not allowed that we need to talk about. And I don't know where that slippery slope ends. And what we have said to Simon and what we've said to Elizabeth in some of the meetings that I've been part of. Is that we'd be happy to listen to the options that might be on the horizon. For possible uses on that overlay. So we can make modifications at a town meeting, um, to get those modifications approved. By the citizens of the town. And Simon, of course, never gave us any options other than what was already on the books. Um, and I, I'd say the important thing here is there's a town meeting in November. If there's opportunities that Elizabeth sees for potential uses on that land that's an overlay. That we could incorporate into the language of the zoning bylaw. Um, I think that would be the appropriate way to do it. We go to town meeting and get the townsfolk to approve it. But for us to take the authority and, and, and do it as a temporary permit. Um, just worries me because I don't know who else shows up at the door down the road saying. Well, you issued a temporary permit for a use at Solomon Pond and that overlay. River Bridge wants one for this. Highland Commons wants one for this, and, and I don't want to be in that arbiter position. I want to go to town meet and have the folks at town meet and tell me what they think ought to be allowed in those places, and then we work on that. Thank you.
Uh, I'm going to put Elizabeth back in the audience and Eloise has her hand up.
There's a November town meeting?
Eloise, there's always a November town meeting.
State election?
Yes, or November, or December, or October. You know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I got seventeen days of early voting, starting October fifteenth.
I know, but you, you, you appreciate the fact that there'll be a town meeting sometime before the annual. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Do you want me to move the question? Is there anything else to be said?
Is there any other comments in the, um, in the audience? No? Any other comments from the board members?
I'm torn.
Well. That's why we get paid the big bucks.
Yeah, right? I already got a job that pays as well.
There you go.
I would, there we go. Um, yeah, I would kind of like to hear what. Hudson has to say because I believe the project these guys are working on is mostly in Hudson.
Thought it was Stowe.
Stowe, Sudbury and Hudson.
One in is Stowe and the other end is somewhere else, but majority of it is actually in Hudson. It's an upgrade of communications or something in Hudson.
Okay.
So you, you would think they would be in favor of, um. Enabling these guys to do a better job and less expensive job. I'm curious why they might not be.
How do we get that information?
I don't think we can.
Well, I think.
They didn't zoom in on the last meeting, and they haven't zoomed in on this meeting.
No, they asked us, they asked us for information that we haven't supplied them with yet.
Okay.
Right, I believe they actually tried to attend the meeting that we had to cancel.
Oh, is that right?
I thought I, I thought I saw an email about that.
Right.
So now that a motion has been made and seconded and discussion, because the hearing's still open, we actually don't have to vote tonight though, right? We could still.
Continue the hearing and request input from Hudson, if people want to do that. We could close the hearing and we, or we could take up this vote. Those are our three choices.
Right. Well, if we close the hearing, we should also vote. If we close the hearing, that's.
Right.
Right, so. It's either vote or continue.
Correct. Do you think the information that we're going to gather from Hudson or Garner from Hudson's going to alter your opinion? I mean, we don't know what you're going to get, so we can't probably make that determination.
Um, I might be convinced if they were very positive on it and we worked out this. Limited term that at least initially Bond has said might be acceptable to them. Might be convinced by that.
Okay, how about you, Caroline?
Uh, well, certainly if Hudson was in favor, I might view. I mean. Yeah, I don't know. Actually, I don't think it would change my opinion. We do have two audience members who now have their hands up.
Okay, can we listen to them?
Yeah, one is Mr. Harding again.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hold on one second, Michael. The, the other member?
Uh, the other is, uh, his name is Michael as well. I'll let him talk.
Yeah, Michael Rochet, I'd like to hear from you first and then Michael Harding, because Michael, you've had a, a couple of opportunities, so. I'll listen to you, but I, I would like to hear Michael Rochet first.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Michael, we can.
Okay, um, two things. Uh, one is, um, I would agree with Michael Harden, Harding in terms of his assessment of the. The, the noise situation and the seasonal nature of it. Um, I'm, I'm at one seventy-five River Road and, and I completely agree with, with, with his, his assessment. Sound wise. The other comment I would like to make is that I have occasion to go down, um, uh, Solomon Pond. Uh, not Solomon Pond, uh, the mall road into Brigham Street and on into Hudson. Uh, on a regular basis, and that section of street, um, going down through Park Street is heavily residential. And it's a very, very narrow street in that area, and I would imagine that the town of Hudson would take some heavy trucking. Quite seriously through there. So I would encourage you to, to, to get a, a, a clear statement from the town of Hudson.
Okay. Mr. Harding, would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you. Um, my inclination, when you hear about, uh, the town of Hudson and the, the town of Sudbury. Basically using Berlin to do the, the dirty, the dirty work, as it were, the data storage. I, I, I object to that. I, I think it really would be fitting that a town the size of Hudson. Should certainly be able to find a way to accommodate their own earth dirt spoil, whatever you like to call it, for the duration of their works. And I found it rather telling that if they are declining those applications for various bits of land that they have. That they've concluded for various environmental reasons that it is not appropriate in their town. And that's the same conclusion I feel here for Berlin. If anything, we're a quite a smaller, more rural town significantly than, than Hudson. And therefore I feel there would be an even more added impact. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think we have any evidence that Hudson has turned them away for environmental reasons.
Right.
It might be true, why not? I think that. Um, Jason told us that they're, they, they weren't able to find any spaces large enough and paved. Right, some other spaces that were too small and. Gravel or Christian or something.
Right, I mean, other than not wanting. Other than wanting to, um. Allow the mall the opportunity for some income. To me, there's no reason to approve this. So is allowing the mall an opportunity to, for some income, a big enough reason to overcome the negatives? That's where I said. And I don't know that I've answered that question, but.
Where's our Economic Development Committee representative?
Economic Development Committee is encouraging us to approve this.
The bus company presumably pays excise tax on their buses in whatever, some town. Maybe it's going to the wrong town because.
It's going to the wrong town.
Yeah, where's going?
Probably Hudson.
Where's the bus company headquartered?
Isn't it the Hudson site? Cause they shuffled up here, went over to Hudson, and it, I mean, they initially way back, they were here, then they went to Hudson on Fox Road.
Yeah, but it's definitely the location of the.
The Fox Road side is maxed out.
Yeah, it's the location of the buses that determines where the excess tax is paid, right?
Right.
Not the location of the company.
But you got to know where they are and that.
It, it's where they're registered.
Uh, it's where they're garaged.
Garaged.
Garaged, yeah.
Correct, yes.
So, we haven't tackled that one. That's, we're working on it. we're working on it.
Yep.
But it, it all comes back also to the question of is that a use that's allowed in that overlay district?
Correct.
Yep.
And the slippery slope, because really the buses are the slippery slope.
Right.
At the beginning of the slippery slope.
And they have beeping backup alarms, not duck quacks, right?
Right.
Right.
Lot, lot worse. I think we should continue our hearing.
I'm inclined to agree with you and see if we can get some input from Hudson to find out if they have negative or positive feelings towards this.
Yep. We should make the economic development finish show up to our meeting too.
Okay, we can do that too.
So Jay, is that a motion?
Yeah. We continue the hearing.
I will second that motion. Uh, when is the hearing continued to?
When's our next meeting? It's, um,
Take a look.
Fifteenth or, so, right?
It's at August, uh, the sixteenth is
Sixteenth.
The Tuesday.
Yep. So to be August sixteenth at eight P M. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to continue this hearing until August sixteenth. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Jay, you made the motion, so Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tim Wheeler?
Aye.
Caroline McDonald?
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion is carried unanimously to continue this hearing until August sixteenth at eight P M. Thank you.
Uh, Eloise has her hand out.
Okay.
Have you already approved Tom Andrew? When is that gonna happen?
Okay, so that's one of our timely items. And I think that that's where we're at, at the juncture of our meeting. Unfortunately, the only way they'll approve Mr. Andrews is at a joint meeting of the Select Board and Planning Board. We attempted to set that up for last evening and we were unsuccessful. And I zoomed into their meeting last night and, um, tried to appeal to them to have their vote and then we vote tonight and report back to them and we were basically told no. And our, um, Assistant Town Administrator read chapter and verse from the state statute that we can't do that. So we need to show up to the next.
Is that because it's an elected position?
Nope.
It's an appointed position. Now, I didn't do that when I was appointed to this board, but perhaps we were ignorant of the rules and that was like a hundred thousand years ago, so maybe the rules have actually changed in the meantime, but
Well, I
They were unable to do that for me.
I need to get that document into the Registry of Deeds with his signature. That was mine.
Okay. When's that deadline?
Uh, it was.
Oh. Okay. Because
But I will, uh, just send it and tell them that there is a vacancy and as soon as it's filled, I will get the signature.
Okay, cause the next meeting for the, um, uh, the town Select Board, thank you. I was gonna say selectmen, but I, that's not proper. Uh, is the eighth. So we need to post our, our joint meeting for the eighth. And then we can, at least the majority of us have to show up to vote him in.
All right, it's on my calendar.
Okay.
One last question. Has there been anybody else that has applied for the job?
To my knowledge, no. No one has applied to the planning board and no one has notified the Select Board.
Oh, okay.
So, yep, no problem.
And Jay, you'll get that posted?
Yeah, I still have Leeanne do it. She's setting up meetings. I'm doing agendas with Tom. Just getting your email right now.
Yeah, okay. I don't know what time they landed on. We were at seven ten last time, so, um, I can, we can reach out and ask if it can be seven ten again and then we'll let everybody know.
Awesome.
Think there was one other timely item. I forget what it was now.
Um, I have a timely item.
Okay.
Central Mass wants to know if we would, uh, if it's all right with us to be billed separately for the printing, so we pay it out of our expense budget rather than out of the grant, you know, the money from the, for the project for the housing production plan. And we, we talked about that when we met with Emily the last time, but they have a little document that I'll send to you, Tom, that they just want a signature on that says, go ahead, bill us and we'll, we'll pay you. But I thought we ought to approve that again tonight. So I'd make a motion that we pay the cost of printing for the housing production plan, um, survey out of our, I think we've got a budget for printing town reports and stuff like that, so it would be out of our printing budget.
Okay.
Second.
I got a motion in a second. Do we have any idea of both the magnitude of the cost?
Isn't it like five hundred?
Less than five hundred.
Okay.
Um, let me dig it up.
That's all right. You know, it gives us an idea. Okay, I got a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Four hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Perfect, thank you.
Wait, where did you say the money was coming from?
Well, we've got a budget for printing and a budget for expenses lingers, so
Yep.
Seems like we ought to use some of that.
Got it. Yep. Any further discussion? No, hearing none, I will ask you to vote. Caroline McDonald?
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler?
Aye.
Jay Teach?
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Um, Jay and our packet that you emailed around, there was a bill for
Yep, hundred and twenty dollars and forty cents for
That was for the public hearing notice for the bond project, right?
Yep.
Okay. So can we have a motion that we pay that to?
I'm, I moved that we pay the printing bill for the hearing notice.
Second.
Okay. And the amount, Jay?
Hundred and twenty and forty cents.
Hundred and twenty and forty cents. I got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I'm seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Caroline McDonald?
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler?
Aye.
Jay Teach?
Aye.
Excellent. Tom Sanford, aye. Um, I will, um, write the warrant.
What? How do we get paid? What do we do with this?
Okay, so what I have to do is write up a warrant. I can use your, um, email print that, cause it's a, it's a, I'll just snag it and print it and attach it. I will have to get other people's signatures. Um, so I'll have to run around and do that. So I don't know what everybody's availability is in the next couple of days.
You get electronic signatures?
No.
Hope, has to be a real signature.
Wow.
It can't be one signature. It has to be a minimum of three.
I don't know if it's still known how to sign stuff. It's been so long.
I know, right?
I don't have to come and get yours.
This is a pen.
Three of us.
Yeah.
I have this thing going, I was raised, I get this thing going on where people were sending me checks and I was putting them, trying to put them in the bank, like half of them don't even get accepted.
Because
Computer, now there's like artificial intelligence that instead of the bank towers, made one check, someone didn't write the amount in. And I wrote it in and then I looked and I realized who I wrote it in black ink and the rest of the check was blue ink. And the teller, no problem at the bank, the teller. But then I try to submit things online where they get some kind of AI algorithm, checks them out and it keeps rejecting them for reasons that aren't even right, like not endorsed and it wasn't endorsed.
Wow.
But
Amazing, you can sign multi-million dollar contracts with electronic signatures, but we can't get a hundred and thirty-nine dollar bill paid.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Um, I'm around a little bit tomorrow, a little bit Thursday. What am I even doing Thursday? Oh. Yeah, Thursday, I'm around from like three to six, so you're probably not even
That'd be tight.
Yeah. Um, I'll be around Fri- I can be around Friday evening though.
Um, okay, but I'm, I'm only available until seven thirty and then I ride southeast to the Cape.
Okay. Yeah. So if you wanna call me on your way home from work.
Okay. You said you're around tomorrow night?
Hmm, probably not really.
Okay, Thursday, all right, Thursday or Friday. How about you, Mr. Wheeler?
Um, Friday, I've got I'm free on Friday.
Okay, then it looks like Friday's the date. How about you, Mr. Jay?
Um, yeah, I'm around all week.
Around all week, okay. I'll, I'll run around on Friday afternoon and get these done.
Awesome.
We have one other timely item.
Excellent.
Which is, um, are we gonna be doing Zoom for the rest of the year or hybrid or live? Leah needs to know the schedule of these.
Well, we've been encouraged to Zoom from the town officials.
Oh.
So
Really? How come? Do you know why?
No. I mean, that was part of the what the executive order continuing it was, so I assumed that that was part of it, but I didn't ask, I didn't
Right.
So, like, I don't care. I mean,
I'm happy to Zoom.
Convenient. And it's actually, we get better attendance, I think, don't we?
Certainly.
Makes it a little more convenient.
Yeah.
But proponents and the butters and whatever, it's easier.
How many, how many participants does the Conservation Commission get by holding your meetings in public?
Depends on what's going on, but generally not too many. Yeah. But we at almost every single meeting have at least one thing to sign, if not several.
Yeah.
So it's just so much easier to meet in person.
Can we do, when we do signatures, can we do counterpart copies? And can they, do they have to be witnessed? Like, can we each sign a copy and give it to Tom?
That I don't know about.
I mean, you can, we, the other thing is you can, we can go to the town offices and sign stuff too. I mean, Tom can leave it there and if it's
Right.
Really.
We did that.
Onerous.
Yeah, it's, it's a little more difficult doing that, because then everybody has to go there.
Right. He likes to ride around and visit us.
He does.
I went to visit Tim and I ended up coming home with some purple peppers.
There you go.
We're great. But you know, that's what I'm finding. Most of the stuff I sign, if it isn't electronic, which ninety-nine percent of it is, it's counterpart copies. Everybody signs their own copy and put them all together.
Hmm.
I just, I wonder if that's allowed. That would be easier to have the drive.
I don't know if it would be allowed.
Yeah.
Right.
Be worth asking though. That's true, because I mean, if, huh.
Right, but I would imagine it would need to be witnessed, right?
I don't know.
Maybe not.
I don't know either.
Who would witness Tom or Jay's signature anyway? I mean,
Right, they're just
Right.
Used to be legible, one thousand signatures ago or ten thousand, whatever.
It's probably ten thousand. I know mine, it's gotta be ten thousand, Jay.
They look like twins, you know? I don't know how you both developed the same signature, but
Even I don't recognize.
Independently.
Um, anything else?
Emily will, Emily will come to our next meeting, um,
Okay.
Eight eight forty-five, what do you want?
I'd say forty-five.
Yeah. She said you want us to, to meet and come, and I said, I don't see any reason to come to this one, but I said it would be interesting to hear what you're getting for a response to the mailing, um, and that would be, you know, that next meeting probably would give us a clue.
Okay.
Cool.
Then we probably need to think about, you know, what we want to do in regard to a fall forum, you know, or where, where we want it, where, and do we want to do it remotely or in person? Do we, what do we, what's our plan? So.
One of the things
Be careful, Caroline. There's someone about to
There's a bobcat. Let's see if I can get him to, because he doesn't have a tail. He looks like a bobcat. And his name is Bob.
There you go.
Cause what else do you name a male cat with no tail?
Yeah.
Right. Um, one thing I would like to put in the parking lot, and I think Jay had mentioned it before, is, um, we should probably do something for, um, Janet.
Yeah.
Yes.
For a little ga- gathering or whatever. I mean, we could probably do it, you know, September-ish also, because everybody's still in the throes of summer, even though it's dwindling fast. Um, but I think we should acknowledge
Yep, definitely.
Service and
Is, uh, she's mobile? Tim, is she?
Yeah.
She can come, yeah.
Yep.
Good.
Yep.
She's using a walker, but she's, she was sitting, actually, I went to Lowe's in North Bow day before yesterday and she was sitting on her walker out near the street, like she was expecting someone to pick her up. I hope that's what it was, yeah. But yeah, it looked like she was waiting for a ride from somebody, so.
Good.
And I when I talked to Dennis last, sh- um, she was im- improving from when I saw her and she was mobile when I saw her with the walker, so, you know, things were getting a little better.
Good. Good to hear.
Yeah, good.
Um, following up with our discussion at the beginning of the meeting, while we were waiting for Tom for the official meeting, so the CPA money all the CPA money for the next year is
Do you want this part of our meeting or do you wanna close the meeting and?
Oh, yeah, let's close the meeting. Yeah.
Let's close the meeting.
Okay, I will take a motion to close the meeting.
So moved. Second.
Any discussions? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote to close this meeting. Caroline McDonald?
Aye.
Jay Teach?
Aye.
Sleepy Mr. Wheeler?
Aye. You know, I was out weeding the strawberries at six this morning, so.
Do you still have strawberries?
No, next year's crop. It's so cool though, going out at six and working for, you know, two and a half hours. And then I go to Lowe's with produce after that, but that first two hours of the morning, it's beautiful out there.
Delightful.
Yeah.
Excellent.
All right.
So the meeting is closed officially.
Excellent.